Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's America.
Make sure the filming is on. Our first item of business is a presentation by the Shade Tree Commission. Who's the victim, I guess?
Andy's not here. Thank you. I'm David Schneck with the Shade Tree Commission. And I don't really have a presentation, but what we do have is an announcement that Haverd Township has been awarded a Tree City USA Award. It's a status that -- it's a program that's offered by the Arbor Day Foundation in partnership with the State Forestry Bureau. And it recognizes communities that have sound -- that practice sound standards of urban forestry. And Haverd Township is among those communities. So we at the Shade Tree Commission were proud to announce that, and we'd like to thank the township, the commissioners, and the township under Larry's leadership, and the tree department, under Richard Dockerty's leadership, and Dan Wentz, for their work that has brought us this Tree City USA status. To become a Tree City USA community, you have to have four -- meet four requirements. Maintain a tree board or commission. You have to have a community tree ordinance. You have to spend at least $2 per capita on urban forestry and celebrate Arbor Day. So we at the Shade Tree Commission would like to promote this on social media and announce it through the commissioners newsletter and let people know that conservation, trees, and the natural environment matters to the township. And in order to do that, we have a banner here that was given to us by the Arbor Day Foundation. And we'd like to get a picture of all the commissioners and township staff if you'd like to join us along with members of the Shade Tree Commission to publicize on the commissioners newsletter and through social media. Here's the banner. So that's a good question. So can we have a volunteer?
Turn around this way.
Just like standing up here?
You're much more photogenic than I was.
Should we pick the podium?
I wasn't all the pictures up at the crack when the library did their drop box.
Dan, you better stand up.
I think we should all go left.
There's the podium, it's in the way.
I hate to say this, but the three shorter guys really need to come down. I don't mean it in an insult, but seriously, you're behind these people's heads, so.
I'm right in the middle.
Well, okay Larry, you can stand on your feet like that. Come on Bill, put your tippy toes up. Yeah, we need all shipped down so the podium's not in this.
Stay right between these two.
Okay. You guys need to like double up, like you can come in front a little. Still need to shift. I don't want this podium in it. No, stop right there Dan, and then we're gonna condense. Steve, stand back a little and hold that flag too. Okay, you guys need to condense over a little more, please. Actually, probably be good if you three went up. Mario, Tim, and Jimmy, up in the back, yeah.
Up here with the short guy.
Not at all. Not at all. No, I just organize large family all the time for family shots. Somebody can go on the other side, Larry even.
Come on.
I'll come down here.
Okay, I see Bill, I see Larry. Tim, step that way a little bit. A little bit more. I need you, yes. Okay.
Hey, Tree City.
On the count of three. One, two, three. This is a slow camera? Well, my phone's touching anything, okay. Okay. Thank you for cooperating.
It's a senior workshop in October. They wanna get the work.
Oh, you mean about the senior citizen?
Yeah, thank you very much. Dave, you got a question, Larry?
I've noticed, thank you very much. And any information that you can actually get my way, that we're -- Sheba, that works in Parks Department, is actually in the process of working on the commissioners newsletter, so anything you want to share, if you can get it to me, I'll get it over to her. And I noticed when I go into Newtown Square, they actually, where it says "Welcome to Newtown Square," they actually have Tree USA. Do you know where they get those signs? Are they made up?
We have them.
We have them?
Yeah, when you come into Haverd Township, there's Arbor Day.
There's not a Tree USA on Haverd Township signs that I've ever seen.
Yeah, yeah, when you come into Haverd Township, yeah, right in the median. Crossover from.
I think your point's well taken, though, that we could probably publicize it a little bit more, maybe in conjunction with that thing on Westchester Pike we just did.
Okay. Come in from Brumall down on Vermont Road, Vermont Road by St. Dorothy's.
Contact the Arbor Day Foundation to.
Yeah, I can look into it. I think that would be, yeah, that would be, you know, we have to, I don't know what the cost would be, we'd have to figure that out. Yeah, I can look into it, see if there's more physical signs that we could.
Fairly, I'm glad to help with that. Thank you very much again. Thanks.
Our second item tonight is a presentation from Mr. Tim Denny, the Director of Parks Recreation and Assistant Town agent manager, on our parks update, I guess.
Thank you, Commissioner. Andrew Lee, come up with me. Andrew is an intern working with us for the summer. He's from Penn State. He's studying environmental engineering. He's going into his junior year at Penn State. And Andrew has worked with me quite a bit on this presentation, and I'll introduce you to him in a few minutes for his part. He's also young and tech savvy, and I am not, so the combination, we work well together. Great, thanks Andrew. Good evening, Commissioners. Again, I asked Larry if I could make a presentation tonight. And the reason I wanted to do that was at the July meeting, this board, first reading for the bond, which is, part of that is a significant amount of money going for parks improvements in township. And I thought it would be appropriate to review how we see that money being spent and go over again with you some of the recommendations that I had made last June when we first were talking about this. I also thought it was significant to compliment this board because this is truly an investment in our future, an investment in our parks. And I think it should be noted, and I think it's the biggest investment in our parks in Haverd Township's history. So it's a big deal. And I wanted to just kind of walk you through it a little bit in the hopes of explaining to you how we see it, and then if you have any questions, be more than happy to answer them. The second thing I wanted to review is that this is a township-wide initiative. Again, we've never had something like this in Haverd Township. And it's gonna be a lot, and it's gonna be big. And the third thing I wanted to bring out was, in discussions with Amy and Larry, the money that's being allocated in this bond, the idea is, Amy has suggested whatever we thought we could get going in the next two years. And realistically, there's only so much you can do in the next two years. So I want to kind of set that up, that a couple of years from now, coming back to the second half of it. And the reason I also wanted to stress that is, as you can see by my beard, I'm not as young as I once was, and there's a good chance that it won't be me that you're talking to in a few years when the second half of this bond comes to play.
Tim, that's why I'd like to see Mr. Barrett, your right-hand man up there with you.
Exactly, that's why. Brian's here, our assistant director. Also want to introduce Eileen Matala. She handles all the facility coordination in township, which I know you have all dealt with, some of the youth organizations in town, so you know she has one of the hardest jobs in the township. And Michelle Alberay, who is the vice chair of our park board, so I appreciate Michelle coming out.
Jim, the only problem is Brian's hair is as gray as his beard.
Eileen's here. As I said, there are some economic, real economic benefits. This is a report that was put out by National Recreation and Parks Association stating what you all know, that there's real benefits, economic, short-term and long-term benefits to investing in our parks. And it truly is an investment. Importance of our parks, the jewels of the township, investing in our parks is an investment in our future. Again, what do parks do? Improve the local economy, increase property values, connect us to nature, strengthen the community, and enhance our health. There are, this is a township-wide initiative, but I know each of you have concerns about your own ward also. And so it's a combination. And what I wanted to show by this is that parks are local and township-wide. Our comprehensive plan defines them by geographical area and number of residents served. These are the three major types of parks we have: pocket parks, neighborhood parks, and community parks. We in the field, we also define parks by the amenities they offer. And I put this up here. Pickleball is extremely popular in Haverd Township. We put in the courts, working with Dan a couple of years ago. But it's the only location in town where you can play pickleball. So parks are township-wide. They're both ward-specific and township-wide, and there's a number of examples of that. This guy here, we have one dog park in the township, so obviously it serves the entire township. This is summary of the township facilities. See, 45 fields, 23 playgrounds, 19 tennis courts, two lights, 18 basketball courts, six with lights, 10 restrooms, eight pavilions. The things I put in red there are where there's only one location. And then at the bottom, we have three miles of trails. And again, just to emphasize the idea that parks are both local and township-wide, so an investment in a tennis court at Paddock or Grange may look like it's just for that ward, but it's not. It's for everybody in the township who plays tennis. And I realize I'm stating the obvious, but sometimes it can lose sight of that when we talk about parks. So now I'm gonna bring up Andrew, and Andrew is going to show you on a map in a way that only bright young people can, what I just talked about. So Andrew?
Okay. Tim, thank you very much. Slide over to a different page to get to the map. Okay. So as you can see, we have a map of Haverd Township here and outline in green are all the parks. As we go down, we can see where all the baseball fields are, marked in blue. If we scroll down a little bit more, we can take away baseball fields and we can show all the playgrounds, all the tennis courts. I'll click out of those and move on to basketball courts. As you can see, we're using the map as a visual tool to see that although every park may not have a basketball court or a baseball field, many courts and fields we do have cover all the wards and are open to use to everyone in the township. As Tim was emphasizing, it's not a per ward basketball court thing, it's open to all the residents of the whole entire township. Coming back.
Thanks Andrew. So here's some of the major capital projects of the past seven years. As the board may recall, those who were on the board, 2011 passed the bond. Not all these came from the bond, but it gives you a sense of what took place. And most of these projects, if you recall when I spoke last June, these were major steps forward to improve what we already had, or to the pavilions, the bathrooms, some of those kind of things. So all those types of improvements came from the bond that was passed in 2011, and then we have some other sources also. But that gives you a general idea of what has taken place in the major projects. Shows a grassland park, new sign, new court. This, I believe, is Paddock with the pavilion. This is over at Merwood, getting their new bathroom. And again, Andrew's gonna show you on a map, give you a sense of township-wide.
So emphasizing the same point here, we spend capital funds across township and across all the wards. Every red spot on the map is somewhere where we had capital funds spent. And our many parks which have had capital improvements are open to park users across the township. For example, I live near Paddock Park, but I often play basketball near Bailey. So just to see, they really are everywhere.
Thanks Andrew. So these are some of the things that are not covered. Again, in speaking with Amy, she recommended that we try to focus on what we thought we could get started in the next two years. These are some of the things that are not covered. One, I put up there, the crack. As you know, the crack opened in 2012. Fortunately, the operation of the crack has been very successful. It operates self-sufficiently on the revenue we generate, but does not cover capital improvements. So if down the road, need a new roof, the revenue we generate at the crack does not account for that. So you want to keep that in mind, looking down the road. In some ways, people ask me all the time about the operation of the crack. In some ways, it's like the stadium next door. In other words, it operates on the revenue it generates. But it's also a little different than that. It's somewhat like Veterans Field out here, in that the walking track, any resident in Haverd Township can come in and use that, the same way anybody can come in and use Veterans Field to walk around or shoot baskets or whatever. And in some ways, it's like this building right here. We do about 200 hours a year of things that are township-related, the fireman's ball, police issues, EMT things, elections. So it's kind of a hybrid of that park, the stadium, and this building. The turf field is entering its ninth year, believe it or not. Hard to believe, but time flies. We've done very well. It's used constantly, seven days a week, and fortunately, it has done better than its warranty, which was eight years. And as we meet each year, we have it maintained, but in speaking with the representatives in field turf, we probably can get another two or three years out of that, and then there'll be a fairly significant investment in that turf field. Again, that'll be down the road a little bit. The next one I really wanted to focus on a little bit. Some of you may know, ADA is very complex, very comprehensive. The laws regarding ADA and public facilities have evolved and evolved and evolved. The best way, I told Larry, I've read a lot, talked a lot, gone to workshops a lot, we have an obligation by March 2012, any new improvements, we have to make them ADA compliant. So we have to figure out, anything we do to a playground, now we have to figure out how to get the path to that playground. In addition, it's to our benefit to have a transition plan. In other words, at some point, you have to be able to point to, this is how we intend to handle ADA at all of our parks and all of our facilities, not just new ones, but old ones, moving forward. Moving forward. I read a case study of Chicago, they have over 500 parks. The list of architectural barriers that they had was pages and pages, hundreds of pages. But they have literally a 40- to 50-year plan to deal with that. So an ADA transition plan is a prudent thing for the township to have, to point to. Doesn't have to be tomorrow, doesn't have to be next year, but we should have an idea where we're heading. I put obsolete surfaces there, as some of you know, Larry at Guest Track, Bill at Hilltop, Dan at Paddock, and Richland Farms, we have surfaces out there that we should decide what we're doing with them. I think they can be used beneficially, and if they're not going to be, let's tear them up. But to just let them sit, we have the one at Bailey, I mean, we have a number of them around town, from times when tennis was more popular or other things. So that's another thing. And then changes, like I said, pickleball, you know? Five years ago, we didn't have pickleball, now it's more popular than tennis. This is just to give you an example of ADA transition. Where are we heading with that? The focus of a lot of this bond is on infrastructure, a little different than the previous one seven years ago. Things like fencing, we have a lot of old fencing in this township. Goes back 40, 50 years. It's not the glamour kind of things that you're gonna say, oh wow, isn't that great? We got new fencing. But we need it, and it's not gonna get any better, you know? It's, as I said, it's like your home, you have to do things. So a lot of this is just fencing, things like that. And here's what we did, is what we are recommending as our strategic order of priority. We start with the playgrounds, and then again, I have the ADA pathways, wherever we make those improvements. Some of our courts, as most of you probably know, a lot of our courts are in bad shape, and benches, things that I think we can move forward on. I put trash cans there in the middle, and Andrew's gonna come up and tell you his, what he did this summer, and give his report on trash cans and how it relates to recycling. And then you see where I put regrade the ball fields. A lot of talk about, people would like to regrade the ball fields, but as I said, Eileen can tell you, people are very parochial with their ball fields. So that requires a level of cooperation among all the groups before we can kind of figure out, okay, if we're gonna be shutting down a field for a year, everybody's gotta cooperate to make that work and recognize that it's for the good of all. So the things at the bottom there require a little more coordination than the things at the top. And what, again, what I was trying to do was present a balance, so that if you would like your civic groups to get involved in playgrounds, there's room for that, and there's other things that we can move forward. I think that's the best way to use this money. Oops, and now I took away Andrew's cue. Sorry. This is, Andrew will give you his report on recycling.
Okay. So to open up, I want to explain Haverd Township's current situation on park trash and recycling. So while recycling in our parks is picked up by park maintenance, trash is picked up by Public Works. Park maintenance gathers recycling ideally once a week, but due to lack of manpower, weeks are often missed. Park trash is picked up every day along three different routes throughout the week. There's a Monday-Thursday route, a Tuesday-Friday route, and a Wednesday route. And how do I know all this? Fortunately, this summer, I had the pleasure of working with both park maintenance and Public Works. On June 8th, I went on the recycling run, and from the 27th to 29th, I went on the trash runs. And on these runs, I noticed, for the lack of a better word, a few problems. The first issue is that recycling pickup is irregular. Park maintenance tries to make it out once a week, but are often too busy. Recycling isn't a high priority, so then the recycling cans tend to overflow, and park users with no better option are forced to litter. The second problem is that our cans are mobile, as you can see the cans above. Not only can they be moved by park users, but they're often knocked over. This is a common and annoying issue when I went on both the trash and recycling runs. Litter on the ground not only creates more work for those responsible for keeping our parks clean, but while it's on the ground, ruins the aesthetic of a nature park. My third problem is that out of our 33 parks in our township, only 23 of the parks actually have recycling bins. So if a park user isn't given the option to recycle, they're not going to. A fourth problem is recycling contamination. Recycling's tricky, and when presented with a recycling bin, park users often don't know what is and what isn't recyclable. Good-intentioned people often misrecycle. While going on the recycling run, I noticed that our township's recycling is plagued with non-recyclables such as styrofoam cups, pizza boxes, plastic bags, chip and granola bar wrappers. And the last problem I noticed was can mislabeling, and this is a big one. Public Works uses every single one of these cans as a trash bin. Unless the bin is a standard recycling bin given out by Haverd Township, Public Works has the responsibility to put it in the trash, which is very misleading, because half of these trash cans say recycling. They have recycling stickers on them, they say recycling only, but they're trash bins. So even when park users do recycle properly, nine times out of 10, unfortunately, their good intentions literally end up in the trash. But why should we care? First off, as Tim and I have been saying, parks are an investment in ourselves and are key to our and all communities. In a recent PA Land Trust study, they found that for every dollar invested in parks, it came out with $3 in medical benefits. We're extremely lucky to have 33 parks in our township, and we should do our best to keep them pristine. No one wants to spend a day in the park with their kids in the trash-filled park, and more importantly, no one wants to live in a dirty neighborhood. Litter not only spreads illness and disease, but also decreases property value. By keeping our parks clean, we are not only creating a sustainable environment, but improving our community's health, property value, and social activities. So because of these reasons, I've dedicated a large part of my summer to researching and solving the problems of recycling litter in our parks. Fortunately, I found a solution. So I found that our solution, that our parks need a set of clearly labeled, consistent, permanent trash cans in proper locations. So I proposed the Sterling Side Load Double Recycling Station, which is 110 gallons, it's pretty big. So this product is virtually maintenance-free, it never needs painting, it never splinters, and the units are constructed the last decades, so we're thinking long-term right now. The clear labeling tells park users what they can and cannot recycle. As you can see, it clearly says paper only, bottles and cans, so someone can't accidentally put a granola bar wrapper in there. It's very straightforward. So that leaves little to no room for recycling contamination. The consistency removes the problem of having an odd assortment of non-mislabeled bins and helps the aesthetic of the parks. The containers themselves weigh over 150 pounds when empty and over 200 pounds when they're full, so that can prevent them from being moved around and knocked over, preventing litter in our parks. So we are recommending that these bins be placed in eight of our most popular parks, which would include Cooper Town, the Grange, Hilltop, Merwood, Paddock, the Reserve, Veterans Field, and Westgate, as a total of 49 recycling stations. As you can see, we have the eight parks mapped here on our Google Maps, and the bins would be positioned in accordance with foot traffic. Foot traffic hotspots include entrances and exits, bathrooms, bleachers, baseball fields, basketball courts, and pavilions. Zoom in a little, I'm gonna zoom in on the Reserve right now. We can see that we have these trash bins located at the foot hotspots. I'll zoom in once more. See if that clears up. Anyways, to go in depth, I know trash and recycling isn't the most glamorous topic, but if we are investing so much into our parks, maintenance is key. By implementing these trash and recycling stations, we are not only creating sustainable green future, but investing in and keeping our parks clean. The project would have cost about $94,000, and unfortunately, even the graphics isn't shown right now, but I believe Tim has more to say about our investments.
Thank you. Thanks Andrew. Andrew was out there in the hottest week of the summer, working with the trash men. And the whole idea was certainly not to point fingers at anybody, but we have a system that right now, and I know Larry is struggling with, where do we go with recycling? And we've talked with Larry about this, and we had, in the program, we had put $200,000 towards permanent trash cans. That's a lot of money. And I said to Larry, I don't want to put this kind of money into this if we're not gonna follow through. So we recognize it's a conversation that's ongoing, but Andrew did a great job of researching, and we think we have a pretty good solution, and tried out at our major parks and see how it goes. Again, just to review and summarize, that's the presentation I gave you last year, three and a half to five and a half million. This bond calls for two and a half million. So as I noted, there's more to be done, and I don't know what happened, my general recommendations, but, there they are. Add staff to park maintenance. Official map and our comprehensive plan, again, what that is, when, I know there's a committee for the comprehensive plan, an official map identifies properties in the township that if they were to be developed or become available, that the township would have a shot at purchasing that. Maybe it connects a trail or connects a park. So just recommend, it's a good tool to have. Rain gardens are becoming part of our operation in the township. I think they're a good thing, but they require their own maintenance. And then our trees, as Andrew did a pretty comprehensive presentation. And then our trees, as Andrew did a pretty comprehensive presentation about ash trees in our parks, and as we know, that's an issue. But I think a comprehensive, trees are huge. If you have trees in your yard, you know they're a big deal. Trees in parks are even bigger, and a comprehensive approach to the trees in our parks, part of my recommendation. Changes to the ordinance, again, this is from last June. We've done the dogs in parks, and I'm recommending we deal with business and advertising because that's become a mishmash. So looking down the road, I think it would behoove us to, to have some clarity on that. So with all that, I again commend the board for taking this step. I think it's a great step. It shows a understanding of how our residents view our parks, and it's a great investment in the future. And there's Larry jogging back there, being a good sport, yeah, so. And I'd be happy to, as my mom, son, and Eileen there, her daughter Ella.
There's Eileen in the back.
Yeah, that's right. There, yeah.
That's my dog.
Dog. Everybody's a little older now or moved on, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them. If not, again, I want to commend Andrew. This is his last day, and he's, he's really done a nice job for us.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions from the board? Great presentation. Thank you very much.
Your, your recommendations with the staff, that's not anything that we put in the bond issue?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, great. Any commissioner committee updates?
Mr. President. We will not be considering the bond issue at next week's meeting. We've postponed it for one month while we consider one or two of the project entries that are associated with the bond issue, and we will be taking that up again in September. And while I'm on the subject of September, a reminder to everybody that the Tuesday after Labor Day, September the 4th, is, is our regularly scheduled official action meeting. We don't have a work session in September. Tuesday, September the 4th is our official meeting.
Correct.
At 7:00 PM.
Correct, thank you. Any other commissioner committee updates? Chief, police crime update?
For the month of July, the police report, criminal arrests, we have 20, juvenile arrests four, traffic citations 70, non-traffic 18, written warnings 82, parking tickets 312. Burglary in the 400 block of Covington, alcohol and food were taken. A homeless suspect was arrested. He was also charged with theft from a vehicle on Pickwick Road. We had 24 thefts from autos all overnight. In fact, I just got a video from a detective from a homeowner in the Lattark section of 4:24 in the morning, two males walking up and down driveways and trying corridors. And his car was entered that night, where some change was taken, but it's all over the township, mostly located in the eighth, seventh and eighth wards. I guess because it's close to the township line, we're getting a lot of that walk-off from that area there. So once again, I implore everybody, please lock your cars. We have arrested four, five, six suspects in these vehicle entry arrests, but it just continues because as we lock more up, more just come in, it just, it's like almost open season, which we've had the problem for quite some time, along with the surrounding areas. We had a sex offense in one of our block, the Sycamore Road. An arrest warrant was issued, and the suspect was arrested. A camp up at Havreford College, there was a juvenile showing other children child pornography. That investigation is ongoing. This time of the year, we see a lot of bicycle thefts, and we had four bicycle thefts in the area, all unlocked bicycles, K-9 usages. We had seven K-9 usages with two of the seven with marijuana and other drugs recovered from the vehicle, vehicles.
Great. Thanks, John.
Announce about tomorrow night, John?
Tomorrow night?
Tomorrow night is National Night Out, it's a nationwide thing. Our, our program will be at the Lowe's parking lot. We'll have a lot of equipment there from surrounding towns also. We have a lot of local organizations and groups coming, so it's, it's just a great night. There's free food for the community to come out, talk about safety things, look at fire trucks, look at police cars, talk to our public officials who want to come, and also a lot of police officers will be there. So it's a great night for the community, so we urge everybody to come out and join us for National Night Out.
What time? Six to nine. Six to nine o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Good luck back at State College and hope, good football season hopefully. There's one item for discussions, the DCED planning grant application regarding the Oakmont Triangle. Do we want to talk about that? Mara? Okay.
I can talk about that. That grant is for, the HPD would like to, to get a grant for that. Obviously, this would go in front of the property committee, you know, for selection of a, of a consultant to, to do that area, to, to see what would be best for that triangle there. So there are DCED grants available, and we would like to, to, it's, it's available until August 30th. August 30th is the last day for us to apply for that grant, but money's available to, so we can better understand what would be best for that location.
Is that an out grant, or do we have to match anything, or?
That is a matching grant. It is a matching grant.
And roughly how much?
I believe it was $21,000?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five total? Match half, or 50 total?
You have to match 25,000.
Match 25, so 50,000 total grant. Okay. Thank you. Any questions on that? You can discuss that with the property committee and the other. Okay, great.
If I could ask, I mean, appreciate HPED wanting to do this. Do we have, do we currently have anybody in the township who applies for these grants, or do we count on HPED to do these things?
Actually, the township does, does the grants. I mean, we can, we can write the grant.
I, just to clarify, I mean, I, not to step on Mary's toes, but my understanding is not, is not that HPD is filing the grant application.
Right.
HPED is bringing to this board's attention and to the township's attention the availability of the grant and suggesting to the township that they apply for. So it's the township that would be applying for the grant.
Correct.
The HPD cannot apply for the grant. The township has to be the applicant for the, for the grant.
Do we buy, does it require, I guess then, our commitment of 25 grand, right?
Yes.
Correct.
To make the request to the DCED, that's the Department of Community and Economic Development at the state level, to make the approval, do we have to show them official action on our part to commit $25,000 to make the application?
I am not sure if we need to do that. I don't, I don't think so. I think once, for us, for us to get the grant, for them, if they approve us for the grant, then we have to have the matching grant for them to give us the money.
Okay. So we can, so we can apply without having to target $25,000?
All we have to do is authorize Larry to apply. But...
Typically, you do a fire resolution. I'm not going to blow this application, but you have a resolution in your agenda.
Correct.
Commits the match. I think that answers your question. Yes, the application would improve the resolution if the township commits to a $25,000 match.
And I think because that is over, over the number that is Larry's, Larry Gentile's authority without board approval, we, I, I would think that legally, we would have to approve that in advance. That would just be... And that's exactly what I was asking, is because if we're talking about August 31st, then, is that what you said, August 31st?
30th.
And we have, and we have to, we have to pass this resolution next week in order to apply for this grant.
Right. That's why it's on the agenda, that's why we're having discussion.
Okay. Do we have $25,000 in our budget now?
No.
Do we have $25,000 we haven't spent on something else that could be redirected?
Actually, do not. We're actually trying to make up variances from the winter time, winter storms. So I, what I did is I took the, the opportunity to contact CDBG and the federal government to see if I can use CDBG funds, and unfortunately, I cannot. What I don't know is, we can, if you commit to this, when does this, is this something we'd have to budget for 2019? I don't know that. I don't know anything about that. I'm going to tell you that I'm going to have a challenge to get this done by the end of the month, but I, we start our budget process next week, so my, me and my staff are going to be a little bit busy over the next few weeks. But certainly can be done, I don't think it's a lot of work.
Is that, is that, is that a role the HPED can assist us in in actually doing the grant?
I prefer, if this is going to be our grant, I prefer to do it in-house.
I mean, it would have to be 2019.
2019 project.
Yeah, if it's August.
2019.
Right, September's the end, so you're, you're looking to budget a certain...
What do we, I'm sorry, we said that fairly definitively. This will be granted in 2019 if we...
2019, it's a grant for 2019 project, so.
Okay.
The match would have to happen in 2019.
So we can, we can make this commitment next week, and it would be satisfactory for us to say that we're going to commit to putting it in the 2019 budget. Don't need to bind $25,000 in the budget now, in the 2018 budget.
Right.
Mr. President.
Mr. Seale.
Couple of things. One, I have concerns about a resolution that is drafted in a way that this is where it's what another group believes. A resolution one should be by what this board believes. Second, it's mentioned the property committee. The property committee this year has undertaken to work with consultant to address the township building. Unfortunately, and over the, the prior years, we didn't do a thing. So I feel like we're sort of at the back end of a process here, and I'm just not sure how this would, would, would work in conjunction with the property committee since it's never been discussed with us. And the committee did not meet over the prior two years. I wasn't chair then.
Correct. I mean, I, I'm not really sure if we have a use yet. I mean, we still have decisions to make on the library. If we, if the library gets renovated, that building has to be used for about a year and a half as a temporary library. So I mean, it's, there's nothing going to happen to that site likely until 2020 or 2021 at this point, if it has to be used as a library for a year, year and a half. And then...
But is it, but this, is this an opportunity to get 25 free grand? I mean, it was $25,000 that we would spend anyway if we're going to analyze what we're going to do with our township building.
Correct.
I mean, and we don't have to put it into the 2019 budget. We can remove it from the 2019 budget if we don't get this grant, or we can reallocate the money to something else. Does anybody, I mean, is this a one chance thing? If we don't do this by August 30th, it won't be available next year?
If we don't do it by August 31st, then the funding window closes.
Well, if I, if I could just interject, I mean, absent this grant in particular, you know, I do think it is our responsibility to begin actively as a board and as various committees, you know, deciding what we're going to do with that area and with the old township building. I know we have the issue with the library, but this is, the concept of this is a planning idea, a planning idea for an expert that will exist whether the library uses it for a year and a half or not. It's really that we can be in the process of deciding what is the best use for that space, and one that frankly, we probably shouldn't wait until after the library uses it to undertake, because as it is, we've been in this building for about seven or eight months now. And, you know, if the library does end up using it for some short period of time, I think we should be in a position where we have an idea, a pretty good idea, if not have already decided what we're going to do with that space immediately upon the library's exit. So that, that would be my theory in terms of, you know, when we hire this type of person, which this grant perceives. Now whether we use this grant or not is another issue, but I think, you know, this is something that is in the correct timeframe, in my opinion, to undertake now.
Where does this fit with the comprehensive municipal plan? I mean, we're looking at something for the whole township, and if we're going to make a decision on one building, have we made progress on, with that?
Yeah, we have a grant going for that, to partner with, originally to partner with Radner.
Right.
So I mean, it seems like if we're going to dump money in it, we should be putting money in to buffer up the comprehensive plan, so we have it tied in together.
Correct, but this would be just for, for this area?
This becomes another one-off as well, outside the comprehensive plan.
Correct.
Which takes away, you need to have a comprehensive plan.
Because it's not, I mean, by the time the comprehensive plan is, is complete and ready for, they're not going to spend the time that they will to figure out what is best for this, for, for the location in that area.
That is the comprehensive plan, though.
I understand what you're saying, but by the time that that goes...
I mean, to me, the comprehensive plan is a living document. We're always constantly updating it. We're putting money into it. I mean, the zoning and planning commission was working with Lori and Radner to do it and get it going. I think the last discussion, we got an update from Steve on the committee, was that we may have to go it alone because it was true, you know, we're trying to wait for Radner to figure out their projects as part of their comprehensive plan. I mean, we have an obligation to get that thing tightened up over the next year or so, right, Steve? You're on that committee here.
Absolutely, and unfortunately, it looks like we're probably going to have to go it alone. I mean, obviously, we would have liked to have saved some money, and it was suggested by this board that we partner with someone, but when we try that, and I agreed with it, and it's not, it's not going, it looks like it's not going to work. But I do think that we should move forward with this grant, and I concur with Commissioner McCloskey on what he just stated. I think we need to have an idea as to what we're actually going to do, going to do with that building. It's just sitting there right now.
That is what the property committee began this year. We met in March. You know, my goal has been to have some preliminary information to this board later this year. Woodup's been working with us as, in her role as a consultant, and we've reached out to people, and now we have a plan that, for whatever reason, has not come to the property committee, despite the fact that I chair it, Mr. Aliva is vice chair, that would in turn delay potentially our planning role till next year while we wait to see about funding. And, you know, we have board committees that are charged with this, and I have significant concerns about using outside consultants on grants, you know, from a practical perspective in my role as chair, that I've never seen nor been presented other than through this agenda.
That's, that's the idea, is that it would be presented to, if we were able to get this grant, it would be the charge of the township and the property committee to find that consultant so that we could, but all the HPD is asking is for us to apply for the grant and get the money for the grant, and then for the township to move towards, towards getting a consultant in this, for this triangle.
And are we supposed to stop what we're doing now, which is what my sense of this is? This isn't a grant till 2019. We're moving forward now. The, you know, for whatever reason, the committee did not do a thing, did not meet in 2017, did not meet in 2016, and now in 2018, there's a sudden urgency when, for whatever reason, those in charge in 2016 and 2017 didn't even think to have a meeting when this building was under construction. And suddenly, the urgency is here when it wasn't and candidly should have been done years ago.
Mr. President.
Go ahead.
I, I, I'm assuming, since Ms. Woodup is no longer a full-time employee... I, I'm assuming, since Ms. Whitup is no longer a full-time employee of our township, that we pay her along the lines of a consultant, and it wouldn't be a bad thing for us to find grant money to pay Lori for her services on this work. I don't, I share a number of your concerns, Commissioner Siegel, as well as your view of the history in the last couple of years on this issue, but what happened in 16 or 17 doesn't really matter about what we need to do in 18. I don't see anything in this resolution that requires anyone to stand down, not continue to talk about this. I do feel like you do, that it really doesn't need to have, this does not need to be a resolution proposed by and expressing the feelings of the HPED, when in reality, it should be a resolution of the township, that the township recognizes the unique opportunity of the township building, and the township wants his manager to.
The HP doesn't care whose name is on it. You can change the name on it or put whatever you want on it. We would just like.
If I could, we're not, we're, never interrupt a guy who's on your side, Mario. Remember that? Remember that old political nugget we all learned 13 years ago? I don't see a reason not to pursue any sources of money, because I've not seen any restrictions on this, but if we get, if we actually get this grant, and then it turns out the grant has ridiculous conditions on it that we don't want to follow, we don't need to follow it. But we may find that we could use grant money to reimburse ourselves for the money that we pay Ms. Whitup, because she's no longer a full-time employee. I don't know if it's set up in the same way that, let's say, tax exempt financing is set up, where you can spend money as much as 18 months before you actually do the borrowing and then reimburse yourself for that. So, I don't, I don't see the harm, especially if we don't have to do this until the 2019 budget, of having somebody take a shot at doing this before August 31st.
Look, I didn't want to interrupt, because we're probably on the same side, but if I could just interject, I just want to make sure, my reading of this, though, would not be that we could reimburse Ms. Whitup. Despite her talents and skills, this would be to be hiring someone who's an expert in planning for town design and town, you know, downtown areas. And that is something that, you know, I don't know where the property committee is, but that is something that I think, that I would hope the property committee would be doing at some point anyway.
That's why we've reached out to someone with that expertise.
So, it would not be, it would be to reimburse he or she, as opposed to Lori. So, I just want to make sure we're, we don't get sidetracked by that.
If there's money left over, we can reimburse ourselves to the money we paid Lori. I just, there's no, I don't know anything about the details of the deal. I just, I see $25,000 that, as of an hour ago, I didn't know was, had access to, and it sounds to me like we're going to spend $25,000 of our own money dealing with this issue. And so, again, it is, it has become exigent, I guess, just because of the fact that it's, its window shuts in August 31, but if, you know, if we're comfortable that we don't have to take $25,000 out of an existing budgetary need in 2018, instead can just make a commitment to put it in the 19 budget, and then take it out if we don't like the conditions of the grant, or find out that we don't get the grant, or dedicate that money for some other reason, I don't see any reason why not to. And I would say, Mr. President, I appreciate your point about the comprehensive plan, but the comprehensive plan is like the book of secrets from that movie. I mean, I, this is a very.
Oh, no, we've allocated, I think, $75,000 towards it there. I have no prob, and again, I'm not on one side or the other.
We can allocate $80,000 for a flying car.
Right, yeah, but you can go fly your car, but.
If it's township, everything we need to do.
The, one of the things I'd like to do, I'm not opposed to the grant, what I'd like to do is rewrite the resolution, because this thing is a resolution, it's already foredeined, it's also offered the opportunity to add public parking to an area. So, it's already, this resolution's already telling us what we're going to do with the property. I thought we were hiring a consultant to tell us what we're going to do. So, I'd like the township manager to rewrite the resolution. I have no problem allocating that if we have to take it out of the comprehensive plan budget that we've budgeted already for next year, so big, because it's going to be a major part of our comprehensive plan or update to there. But I'd like to see this, I have no problem allocating the money, I'd like to see it rewritten so that it doesn't look like we've already foredeined what we're trying to do with this thing, because we're trying to hire a consultant to give us information as to what to do.
I believe we already have to, excuse me, I hate to interject here, but we already have to provide public parking spots when we took the grant for this building, for the one and a half million dollar grant. Yes, you need to, you need to check with Lori, because part of that grant was to provide parking in that area.
Which we already have there. We've already opened that lot up for people to use now, right?
Correct. I'm not saying that it isn't, but you're saying to, in this grant, it's.
Yeah, but I think, I'd rather leave this up to the consultant to tell us exactly how to do this. I mean, we don't know, the property committee could come back and say, we're going to sell the property. Who knows what's going to happen? I mean, it, we don't know what's going to happen. I mean, there's a lot of uncertainty in my mind as far as the use for the next two years, so.
But I think that a consultant needs to be, we need to hire a consultant.
Correct.
We're not making those rash decisions, we're making these decisions based on sound.
Right. I mean, I want to hire a consultant for his expertise, not tell him what, how I want it to come out, so.
At this rate, I don't think there's any danger of us doing anything rash with the township building.
Right. That's, yeah, the mold's still there, so don't worry about it.
The building is open for public parking, everybody, so everybody knows, just to reiterate that.
For free.
For free. So, we get the grant to put the meters in, right?
But it's still awfully far from everything.
It's not.
Really, I mean, you have to go all the way around and then walk up and.
And, okay, we've beaten this one to death. Any other comments on that?
What we'll do is look at a.
There'll be a resolution put for it, yeah, right.
Next, next week.
We'll get it to you in a day or two, I think. Rest of the agenda for next week, stuff we've, items that we've already discussed, the second reading on the cell tower, traffic, another traffic first reading, resolution for Haverford Township Day, which is recurring housekeeping issue, traffic signal, Manoa and Caracan, and then budget approval adoption.
Traffic signal? Is that for next year, when the?
Yes, it's, if you would.
When the old Manoa Road?
Yeah, we had asked PennDOT that they would consider putting a flashing pedestrian crossing at that location, and PennDOT agreed that they would do the installation, they would install it, and we would take ownership of it.
Okay. So, it's not a light on?
No.
Flashing?
The flashing pedestrian.
But is this like that flashing light on Route 30 in Ardmore, where if you hit it and flash it, everybody has to stop while somebody crosses the street?
No, I believe it's the, very similar to the ones we have now, but have solar power that actually.
Like the warning light on Manoa at the bottom here at Nellie's Run.
Yeah, just because it's a state road, we have to do the approval. And then contract awards and purchases, Nider Hall, and paramedic department.
Mr. Wexler, there's one thing that came in today that I didn't get a chance to put it on the agenda, that it's kind of urgent, and I have asked Lori to add it on for next Monday night, is that we did the bid openings, and it just came in today with the consolidated bid openings for salt contract, and I'm going to ask the board to approve a low bidder for that.
Okay.
I don't have the information tonight, but the good news is, I think it went down about a dollar per ton. So, I'll have that information added on for next Monday.
Okay, so, there'll be an additional item for salt. Hopefully, we don't need it next year. Any other items that need to be discussed? Mr. McGarney.
Yeah, Bill, can I ask you the status on the, what the ordinance, we were going to come up with something for the beekeepers from last month?
It's the ordinance committee, have you looked at that?
I've had emails, I've had emails with people, we won't have something for this month, I'm going to try for next month.
Okay.
I've had emails, though, with three or four different people, and I explained that between vacations and stuff, we couldn't meet, because my, my goal is to talk to them along with the ordinance committee and then try to come up with a consensus, so it's probably September, or potentially, since September is early because of the holidays, October, but they're aware of that, and everyone seems fine with it, but it was Mr., I think, Sana Moore and a couple other people that I've been in email communication with.
Yeah, Mike, I just want you to know, I'm not against the beekeepers, but I do think that somebody here has to be held responsible, either the person that dropped it off or the person who gave permission.
Correct.
And because, you know, that's, that could be deadly, really.
Yeah. Commissioner Siegel, are you taking public comment? Because I have a couple of beekeepers in my, in my ward who would like to have some say in what goes into the ordinance. They're not against doing an ordinance, but there's some issues that they have, that should I have them contact you by email?
My, my plan was, as I may not have said it artfully, was to have the, those people interested along with the ordinance committee meet, so it would meet anyone, you know, any committee meetings are open, and that's the goal, because my knowledge of the issue is minimal, to say the least, and we had some people there, you know, with tremendous expertise, so I'd rather hear from them and get a sense in some ways, although it's not as technical, it parallels what we've done with dogs in the parks and the playgrounds and things, where you get those comments, but at the committee meeting rather than in front of this board, and I think it works best. So, yeah, anyone, but I don't know what that date is going to be.
Can we announce that at the next meeting?
Yeah, I have to get a consensus from the committee, so I don't know, I'll be able to do it in the next week, but I'll try.
Okay, that'd be great.
But again, certainly, people should be encouraged to come here.
I'd rather, the people who have contacted me and my ward are experts in their, in their area, so I would like them to be, you know, because they can, they can give some expertise to what's, to what the plan is here and help write the ordinance rather than having to write it again and again and again.
I agree.
And I certainly encourage them to do that, but I would also encourage them to come to a meeting here, because a lot more people will see that and experience it. And the one thing, the public and we, all the rest of the board, who might not be part of this ordinance conversation, would benefit from knowledgeable people in this area, because certainly, I mean, you get, we saw it with chickens, and I think people honestly are much more legitimately afraid of bees. It would, with bees, it would be good to have intelligent discourse.
Yeah, we have people in the township who are allergic and deadly, you know, something like a bee sting could be deadly.
Right, and again, what, you know, what that, they can address, they know that issue, they can address this issue. I mean, there are beekeepers in the world that I'm sure have allergies and yet have managed to survive the issue, so I'm curious as to, I would benefit as much as the ordinance committee would from their public testimony.
Very good. Anything else? There being none, I would entertain a motion.
Motion adjourned.
We are adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies and gentlemen.